Good evening and welcome. This is a public hearing of the Zoning Board of Appeals of the City of Evanston. The zoning ordinance directs this body to hear applications for major variances, special uses, and appeals from decisions of the zoning administrator. Depending on the type of matter, this board will either make a final determination or send its recommendation to city council. Will you please read the roll?
Beth McLennan. Matt Rogers.
Here.
Violetta Cullen.
Present.
Scott Gingold. Andrew Gallimore.
Here.
Mary Beth Burns.
Here.
Myrna Aravalo.
Here.
With six members present, we do have a quorum. Also present tonight are zoning planner Melissa Klotz, Planning and Zoning Administrator Lori Pearson, and Assistant City Attorney Mario Tretto. This is a formal meeting, and there are rules that govern our proceedings. Most importantly, only one person speaks at a time to accurately record the proceedings. Anyone who wishes to address the board regarding any matter on the agenda will have the opportunity to do so at the appropriate time. Our procedure is to hear from staff on the documents on file and then receive testimony or other evidence from the applicant or appellant. Next, persons who wish to make any statement regarding any matter may do so at that time. Any person with a legal interest in property located within 500 feet of the subject property may present evidence, reasonably question witnesses, or seek a continuance of the hearing. When all supporting and opposing testimony and statements have been heard, the applicant or appellant will be given the opportunity for rebuttal or a closing statement. Then the board will close the record and begin its deliberation. All testimony will be under oath. Although we do not apply the strict rules of evidence, please limit your testimony or statement to your personal knowledge. When you address the board, please state your name and address, and be sure to sign in on the provided sheet. We are audio and video recorded. Please make sure that you are at a microphone when asking questions or making statements so that you can be properly recorded. All proceedings are subject to broadcast at a later date. Any matter not concluded at tonight's hearing will be continued to our next regularly scheduled meeting. There were two items posted on the agenda this evening. The second item on the agenda, which is the matter for 633 Howard Street, has been removed from tonight's agenda and will be heard at a later date. So if you showed up to speak to us on that matter, we will not be hearing it this evening. Other than that, we do have the matter for 1241 Chicago Avenue. Is the applicant present? And that is the sole matter that we have on our agenda for this evening. The first matter, though, that we do have to take care of is approval of our minutes from our November 18 meeting. Has everyone who was at that meeting had the opportunity to read the minutes? And if so, are there any changes or corrections to be made? And if there are none, is there a motion for approval of the minutes?
I make a motion for approval of the minutes of November 18, 2014.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I will note that any member who did not vote was not at that meeting, and that is why they were not voting. With that, we will move into our new business. The first matter which we have, our only matter, is 1241 Chicago Avenue. And if staff would please read that into the record.
Thomas E. Ryan III, Lacy, applies for a special use permit for a type-two restaurant, Jimmy John's Gourmet Sandwiches, at 1241 Chicago Avenue. 1241 Chicago Avenue is located in the B1 business district, which requires a special use permit for a type-two restaurant to operate, zoning code section 6923. The Zoning Board of Appeals makes a recommendation to city council, the determining body for this case. Documents included as part of the record include special use application submitted November 19, 2014, standards form, plat of survey, site plans, description of business, image of property, aerial view of property, zoning map of property, and spark meeting minutes.
Thank you. At this point, if I could have anyone who feels they may speak to us on this matter, please be sworn by raising their right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. And if the applicant would please step up to the lectern and state your name and address for the record.
Tom Ryan III, 6007 Sherman Road, 39K, Chicago, Illinois 60660.
Also, Tom Ryan, 5135 Lake Harris, Oklahoma.
Thank you. And if you would please tell us about your proposal.
We operate currently a store at 1729 Sherman Avenue, and that's the model going forward for what we expect to do, hope to do at 1240 in Chicago. Could say, to us, just a vanilla Jimmy John's, quick-serve restaurant, lots of bicycle delivery. That's it, in short. We're going to remodel the site, the interior. Beyond that, there's really not much else to add.
A couple of questions, just so we get them on the record. What are your proposed hours of operation?
10:00 AM to 9:00 PM, seven days a week.
Okay. And how many employees do you predict to have working at any one time in the store?
I think it's 12:00 to 15:00 on lunch shift, as we refer to it, which is now only 6:00 to 3:00. And possibly some at 7:00 on dinner shift, which would be some overlap there until 9:00. Actually, we work a little late when our...
Oh, okay. I guess your microphone is not working. That one is. So again, just to kind of reiterate, proposed hours of operation are 10:00 to 9:00, 10:00 AM to 9:00 PM, seven days a week. And with the number of employees, you were proposing a maximum, it sounded like, of about 12?
Frankly, we hope to need more, but I think as a reasonable prediction, that's very much in play.
And do you have any parking spaces that are leased with the property? Or where will the employees be parking?
There is a parking lot in the rear of the store now that we share with the co-tenant, which is, I believe, the Oasis Spa. The landlord recently just removed a bunch of trees, and we've got, we need to clean it up, do some work to it, to make the spots, just to maximize the space back there. We, I estimate, we could probably get seven or eight spots back there. The overwhelming majority of our employees do not drive to work, though, currently in our Sherman Avenue store. The majority of them either ride their bikes, walk, or just take the train.
And then, in terms of deliveries that you will be receiving, how many times a week do you predict to receive deliveries, and where will those come?
We get regular produce deliveries, which are typically, I'd say, on Sherman Avenue now, we average two to three a week. Those generally come before 9:00 AM. It's kind of up in the air, whether it's usually Monday, we generally get them Monday, Wednesday, Friday, or Saturday. Our larger deliveries come from Cisco, from downstate Illinois, and we've made arrangements to have those deliveries come to be completed no later than 6:30 in the morning. And the driver, the driver has a key to the store. Typically, on Sherman Avenue now, they're out of there by 3:30, 4:00 in the morning.
Okay. And where will those deliveries be coming?
I would anticipate through the, through the rear entrance.
And then, in terms of how much of your business is delivery, I know Jimmy John's model is focused on delivery. Do you anticipate a certain percentage of it being, what is your current operation, kind of maybe as a guideline?
In the year ending now, we're going to do about 65% of all our sales will be via delivery. Of that 65%, we estimate, but good estimate, 80, 85% of that is accomplished on bikes.
And you predict that to be about the same for this operation?
We think so, yes.
Okay. And then, the last question I have is, the City of Evanston has a litter collection plan, which you're probably familiar with, if you're already operating in Evanston. So I'm assuming that you have, you have, are familiar with that. And do you intend to comply with that in this new operation as well?
Yes.
All right.
I hate litter.
And a quick question for staff. Have we received any complaints on the existing operation for?
Not that I'm aware of.
And final question would be, are you, are you proposing any changes to the exterior of the building? Or will it, basically, was sort of changing signage out or anything like that? Is there any other plan to?
None.
Modify the building? Okay. Are there questions from other board members?
I have some about delivery. So the delivery for this new place, will the drivers be based out of the back or out of the front?
Back.
So they'll be parked in the back? Because...
There, there won't be many cars.
Okay.
The bikes will be parked in back, though, yes. We think, we're talking about a bike rack or some, we've got a couple of bikes stolen on Sherman, so we want to be solicitous of our employees' property.
Okay. Because the reason, the reason I ask is, the store on Sherman, whenever I seem to drive by, there's always one of your cars parked in, one of the delivery cars parked in customer parking spaces. And that's something we are generally against, right? Is having employee parking or vehicles that are used for that, taking away spots from customers. And so, just anecdotally, right, I notice that as I drive down Sherman, that frequently happens. And so that's my concern with your existing location, and so I'm concerned at the new location that that's going to happen as well.
Assuming this goes through, when we would open the store on Chicago, my intentions are to take everyone who works for me currently that drives a car for deliveries and transfer them over to this store on Chicago, just because of the ease of parking, and just eliminate the cars on Sherman completely.
Okay.
I feel like it, it was definitely in our best interests, and I'm probably pretty sure you'd like to see that as well.
Absolutely. We'd love to see your, we'd love to see your cars off the street.
Yeah, and with the parking in the back, it's just so much easier with the in and the out.
Sure.
It seems like a great solution. I just, I don't want to go, you know, the four or five guys I've got, be like, "Sorry, no more job."
Right. No, I appreciate that, but you also have to understand, we have to make sure that there's places for our customers to park.
Absolutely, and I'm thinking this is a nice, easy, clean way to fix that problem, fix this problem.
Okay. Thank you.
With the deliveries coming out of, out of the rear of the building, that we will be increasing traffic into that alley, I'm assuming. Best guess, and I think you told me, and I may have forgotten, the percentage of deliveries that are car-based versus bicycle-based, I think you said were about 80/20, is that correct?
85. Bicycle.
Yes.
Correct. 80/85.
Okay, so the majority, overwhelming majority, is bicycle-driven, and you do not anticipate that being a change, because I know one of the concerns that we will hear about probably is traffic in the alley.
One of, I mean, one of my intentions, hopefully, within, you know, a year, two years, I'd like to go exclusively to bicycles. You know, I'm just not at a point where I want to make that decision and impact, you know, impact the people who currently work for me.
Right.
I think I might not hire anybody else going forward that drives a car.
Additional questions for the applicant? If not, I noticed that there were a couple other people here who came out to speak, so we will give them an opportunity, and then give you a, an opportunity after that to make anything that you'd like to sum up with.
Thank you.
So, sir, if you'd like to come up and tell us your name and address for the record?
For the record, I'm Michael Pine. I live at 1210 Chicago Avenue, Unit 503, and I'm president of the 1210 1236 Condominium Association, which consists of 160 residential units and three stores. I'll kind of free-associate through this, because I really don't have a position on this, just some observations and a fair concern, I believe. First of all, I'd love to see a Jimmy John located within walking distance of my home. I have very no experience with the place on Sherman. In fact, I didn't know it was there. However, I have had horrendous experiences with the Trader Joe and the City of Evanston dealing with traffic, particularly traffic exiting from our courtyard. It's on, in January of 2014, we had about eight representatives of the city meet with our board and our residents, and some plans were drawn up, basically compromises to improve safety and traffic flow. The city delivered on none of its promises. We've eventually solved a number of our problems by redirecting traffic through our courtyard. For your information, people now enter through the south. You can see in your plan over here, this is the condo. People enter through the south and exit through the north. Because of the parking situation on the south, no one could see traffic coming south on Chicago Avenue, creating a horrendous potential accident situation. We saw, we appear to have solved the problem ourselves by now exiting north, so that because of the garage and the alley, we now have clear vision coming out. However, you can see a number of our concerns here. Whatever the traffic flow is through the alley, that's going to be on our left turn side. In terms of customers coming in, if customers decide to double park or park, or look for a parking space, dash in and receive their things, they're going to start to create even more congestion, as we have three-way traffic now, traffic into and out of Trader Joe's, Jewel, Osco, and the Whole Foods. So it is a tremendously congested area in terms both of morning, I guess you'll be opening after our rush hour, but closing after people are coming home. So there are a whole set of traffic issues. One of the questions one might ask is whether or not a couple of the spaces in front of the Jimmy John's should be turned into 20-minute parking spaces, so they'll tend to be open for people who want to park, dash in, pick up their sandwiches, and leave. Unfortunately, I and the people I represent are very uncomfortable with the way the city handled our traffic problems. And although I'd love to see you located, I'd also appreciate a very careful consideration of what's going to happen to traffic flow on Chicago Avenue, which already for those two blocks is very congested. We're just beginning to make turns we think are safe. Also concerned, people may park in the garage on our side and then start dashing across the street. You have one crossing, which is in front of the Jewel Osco. You then have a light, and everyone who goes to the Trader Joe's from the west side tends to dash across the street illegally. We're waiting for someone to get hit. So we'd like to see this go through, but we'd also like to see traffic very carefully considered. We have fears that a situation we've just made better may be made worse. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Pine. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Pine?
Try to do this without, there.
So thank you. Just, just so you are aware, the testimony that you've made, whereas a lot of it isn't something that we have control over, will be heard by city council, because it will be part of the documentation that will go forward to them, since we recommend to them in this particular case.
And our older woman, Melissa Wade, is very much aware of this situation, and at times has tried to help us.
Right.
Get action from the city. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you for coming out. I noticed there was one other person. Did you want to make a comment?
I'm here for the Howard Street, which is...
Oh, okay. I just wanted to make sure if you had the opportunity to be heard, you could be. So it appears that we've heard all of the testimony for this particular case, so I'll ask the applicant if they would like to come up and just kind of make any final statement, summation, anything that they may want to respond to about what Mr. Pine has said.
I just wanted to be on the record as not clearly understanding what you said about the left turns, Mr. Pine. I wanted, I, we're friendly with the bicycle shop, and we know them very well, so as soon as, oh, there's the view that I didn't get. When you're talking about the left turn out of the courtyard, is that on to...
The building...
Exact, yes.
People, and people currently, we used to come out this way, and these cars would block our view of traffic coming this way.
The, okay.
We've now reversed the traffic, so people are coming out this way, so that because of the parking garage here and the alley here, there are no cars here, so as you come out, you're now able to see the traffic. So that's what I was referring to.
Okay.
But right now, we're coming out here, and residents and owners will be making a left turn to then proceed north on Chicago Avenue, and I believe, am I wrong, you're going to be located...
The building that's outlined in red there, if you can sort of, right where you're, right where you're pointing.
Right, so if this is your alleyway, there's no alley.
The alley that we're talking about actually runs behind their building and perpendicular.
That's not a problem at all. That's very helpful.
Okay.
So the main concern is the traffic over here and parking, or potential double parking over here, in terms of our people trying to join the traffic flow, which of course is also very much affected by the Trader Joe's traffic in and out. Does that help at all?
It does. The...
And thank you about the alley. That helps me a great deal.
To the, to the north of our site, Mr. Pine, is, is the lot line with an antique store. Right, thank you.
There's no...
And they have no traffic to speak of. I, I didn't, that came out wrong. I saw you, I saw you laugh, and I...
It's both wrong and correct.
Ah, yes. All right. So, that being said, we, we, we don't, the alley is a double-edged sword. I don't like that aspect of it. Where I grew up, my father always warned me, he said, "If you go through an alley," as a thoroughfare, he said, "I hope you get a ticket, because you cannot transit more than a block in an alley, per the rules of the road."
Right.
So I, it was something that he was very sensitive to. So I just picked that up. But the bikes, and, and hopefully the decline in the use of cars, not to minimize our contribution to traffic, because it's not going down, because we're going in here, it will increase by some, I'm sure, extremely modest number. And a lot of our traffic, we too particularly, are off-hours people. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you. With that, we will close the record and begin our deliberation on this matter. We, this being a special use and us making a recommendation to city council, we must find that there are nine standards that are met. But before I walk through the standards, is there anything anybody wants to say before I do that?
Just to note for the record, there is one short-term parking space on the street on that block in front of the dry cleaners.
So with that, we will go through the list of special use standards. The first one being that it is one of the special uses specifically listed in the zoning ordinance. What we are looking at here is a type-two restaurant, and this being a B1 district, it is the type of an establishment that we would expect to find, and it is listed as one of the approved special uses. So standard number one is met. Number two, it is in keeping with the purposes and policies of the adopted comprehensive general plan, and the zoning ordinance has amended from time to time. Again, this being a B1 district, this is the type of place where we would expect to find retail establishments, restaurants, and the like, trying to keep them on major streets off of residential streets. Chicago Avenue is primarily defined as a commercial street, even though we do have a number of residences along it now due to some development, but I believe that standard number two is also met. Number three, it will not cause a negative cumulative effect when its effect is considered in conjunction with the cumulative effect of various special uses of all types on the immediate neighborhood. The inclusion of a type-two restaurant, which is something we would expect to find here, would definitely go a long way towards completing development in this area, giving a place, I believe Mr. Pine mentioned, it would be nice to have sort of a quick-service restaurant that you could be walked to easily. There's a large population of people in the building that he represents alone, and so the fact that we're kind of filling a little niche there by giving people sort of a quick-service stop-in area, I believe would, would help round out this neighborhood. So I believe standard number three is met. Number four, it does not interfere with or diminish the value of property in the neighborhood. We've heard no testimony that would lead me to believe that any of the property values would be diminished, noting that this is especially the type of restaurant, although we did not hear specific testimony to it, just being familiar with it, where we do not have large fans blowing out deep fryer smoke, things like that. So this is probably one of the types of restaurants that would have the least impact on a particular neighborhood. So standard number four is met. Number five, it can be adequately served by public facilities and services. This area has, again, been developed to be a commercial district, and the, the facilities and services that have been put in place along Chicago Avenue should be able to accommodate the addition of, of another restaurant. So that has been met. Number six, it does not cause undue traffic congestion. We have had some testimony about traffic congestion. We know Chicago Avenue is a congested street. There are a number of parking lots that enter and exit along this block, this two-block area, but I do not believe that the addition of this particular restaurant is going to push us past the breaking point. We have heard testimony that a lot of the deliveries that will be coming and going from, are, that will be going from this restaurant, will be on bicycle, which will help lessen the impact of overall traffic in, along Chicago Avenue, and the fact that people will be able to, again, walk nearby if necessary, I don't believe that traffic is going to be pushed past its breaking point because of this restaurant. So that has been met. Number seven, it preserves significant historical and architectural resources. We've had testimony that there are no planned changes to the exterior of the building. I'm assuming with the addition of signage. I think I saw that there may be an additional awning added or something like that, but nothing of significant change is going to occur, so that standard has been met. Number eight, it preserves significant natural and environmental features. We didn't have any testimony about this in particular, but again, if we're not changing the exterior of the building, we should not be having any large impact into the overall environment around the building. And number nine, it complies with all other applicable regulations of the district in which it is located and other applicable ordinances, except to the extent which such regulations have been modified through plan development. Again, this being a restaurant, we know that there will be additional licensing that will be required outside of the purview of this board. The applicant is already operating business within Evanston, so I have no reason to believe that they would not make sure that all other regulations imposed on them by the city would be met. So I believe that standard also is met. Does everyone agree with my findings on the standards?
Yes.
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 I just love how enthusiastic that is about my findings on standards. So with that, with that, I will ask for a motion, again, reminding this is a special use, and usually in the restaurant special uses, we include hours of operation, which the applicant has requested 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM. I'm, I'm sorry, 9:00 PM. Typically, we give a window that's the maximum, so it's not the hours that you're required to operate, but just give you a little bit of leeway, one way or the other, based on the individual district you're in. What are the general hours around there? I'm assuming it's later than 9:00. I mean...
Typically, if we're not in the downtown district, we go to 11:00 on weekdays and midnight on weekends.
And then I would assume we could go as early as like a 7:00? And then I would assume we could go as early as like a seven o'clock opening hour, so-
Do six.
We can do six.
I thought we did six. So they could serve breakfast eventually.
That's fine.
If they choose to.
I think Mayor Beth is hinting that she wants Jimmy John's to serve breakfast. And then we also usually include a condition that employees not be allowed to park on city streets, that they, on our city residential streets. In particular, I know that this is an area that borders up against a residential district on the backside. So obviously, we would not want employees parking into Hinman or anything like that. And then usually, we include the litter collection plan and garbage pickup also as part of our conditions. So with that, I will ask if there is a motion for this case.
Sure. I move in the matters ZB A fourteen ZM JV dash zero one four seven that we recommend to city council approval of the special use for a type-two restaurant at 1241 Chicago Avenue with the conditions that the business hours are from six AM to eleven PM, Monday through, Sunday through Friday?
Sunday through Thursday.
Sunday through Thursday. They're open, opening to twelve midnight on Friday and Saturday, that the employees are not allowed to park on city, on residential streets and that the applicant comply with the city's litter collection and garbage plan.
It has been moved. Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved and seconded by many people. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? With that, it will go as a recommendation to city council with six affirmative votes and none against. And Melissa will work with you to let you know exactly when you'll be before council. With that, we conclude the cases that we were hearing this evening. We do have two other items on our agenda, which are the update to ZB A rules, which were distributed to everyone. There were a few just little cleanup things that we had done. Has everyone had a chance to sort of look through those? Are there any questions? If not, I will ask if there is a motion to adopt our new ZB A rules. And can we make those go into effect January one? Or do I have to give a thirty-day or anything?
They can be effective January first.
So I would just have the, the motion made so that they would go into effect January first.
I motion that we approve the proposed new ZB A rules effective January first.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? With that, our new rules are adopted and will go into effect January first. And then the last matter that we have on our agenda for this evening is approval of our 2015 schedule, a copy of which was sent out. But I know there have been a couple of changes that we've had to make due to city council wanting to use their room.
Correct. Looking at the second meeting in January, the twentieth will not work. We could reschedule to the twenty-seventh, but we would be in Room 2200. And then additionally, the second meeting in September, tentatively for the fifteenth, that will not work. And the week after that will not work either. So I would recommend that we just remove that one from the schedule. And if we end up needing to have back-to-back weeks, we can address it at that time.
Were there any other, did anybody else have any conflict with particular dates? Those were the ones that we noticed we would have issues with on the city or trying to avoid holidays, things like that. If not, is there a motion to approve our 2015 schedule with that change, with those changes?
I make a motion to approve the 2015 schedule with the proposed changes.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? With that, our 2015 schedule will be published with those changes. That does conclude all of the matters that we had on the agenda tonight. Are there any other topics for discussion anybody wants to bring up? If not, I will ask if there's a motion for adjournment. And our next meeting will be on?
January sixth.
January's, oh, okay, December, that's why I was confused. On January sixth.
A motion that we adjourn and reconvene on January sixth.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Confused?
No, aye. I, I just, I'm confused that the sixth is a Tuesday. I thought for sure that was the fifth. I thought, never mind.
It's a Tuesday.
All right.
So with that, we stand adjourned until our meeting on January sixth. That will be here in council chambers. Thank you.